Josh, you ready? Ready? Are you driving? Are you flipping?
When do I turn it?
When I start talking?
Yeah.
Okay. A thank you and then the graphics, right?
Right, there's an introductory slide just of the three of y'all with your titles.
Hello. Yeah, close to good evening. Welcome. Thank you for coming out this afternoon. I'm Anne Buckley, UAB's Chief Communications Officer, and we're so glad you're here to join us as we unveil this milestone in UAB's comprehensive strategic planning process. The work our community has done has been instrumental in laying the groundwork for where we are today. I want to take a moment to recap the strategic planning process since the Strategic Planning Council was established on September 1st, 2016. From January 23rd through March 10th, 2017, the Strategic Planning Council engaged with members of our campus community to gather input on UAB's direction from all sectors of the campus. We thank you very much for your comments, questions, concerns, candor, and collaboration in this final process. Approximately 546 faculty, students, and staff participated in in-person town halls and listening sessions, and we've received a total of 205 comments via our web-based feedback form. Of course, along the way, the Strategic Planning Council ensured that the strategic plan was informed by the Campus Master Plan, our Strategic Communications Plan, the Campus Engagement Survey, and the RCM Budget Model Process. So without any further ado on my part, I'm pleased to turn it over to Dr. Pam Benoit, our Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost, to unveil the final draft of the plan. Pam?
So let me start by again thanking you for all of your feedback because it really was instrumental in helping to formulate this plan. One of the things that we got very excited about was what to call the plan. That really reflected our community. And so this is the name of the plan, Forging the Future. And it really relies very heavily on Birmingham's past in the sense that we will be forging ahead in order to have an incredible UAB presence. One of the things I want to talk about is that there were different pieces of the plan. We started out by talking about what's the vision and the mission of the university, and that involved a lot of discussion and a lot of tweaking of language. And the vision ended up being "One University, inspiring and empowering the creation of knowledge that changes the world." And then the mission is that UAB serves students, patients, the community, and the global need for discovery, knowledge, dissemination, education, creativity, and the application of groundbreaking solutions. That we are a leader among comprehensive public urban research universities with academic medical centers. We also spent a long time talking about values, more than you would expect, and finally tried to encapsulate all the feedback that we heard about the most important values that make UAB unique and distinctive. And so this ended up with a set of values that are on this slide. They include integrity, respect, diversity and inclusiveness, collaboration, excellence and achievement, stewardship and accountability. And as we talked to various constituencies about these values, we saw that they were reflecting what was most important to the university. And as people talked about what made UAB distinct, what made it the kind of place that people wanted to be at, these values kept coming up over and over again. And working on the plan, we started with an inventory of where we were, what was going on in our outside environment to do a SWOT analysis. We talked a lot about what was unique about UAB that we needed to make sure we captured in the plan. We talked about what kind of competencies we wanted our students to have, and we wanted faculty and staff to be engaged in delivering as the plan went forward. And all the different aspects of who participated included the UAB Strategic Planning Council, the many listening sessions that Anne talked about earlier, and then Mission Pillar Subcommittee. So each one of the mission pillars had a subcommittee. They had a whole series of people who also worked on how to develop that particular mission pillar. There ended up four mission pillars, and then a strategic goal for each of those pillars. And as we tried to maintain consistency across the plan, we decided that we wanted to focus on three to five strategic objectives for each goal and two to three activities for each objective. Now, metrics are still coming, and one of the reasons why we haven't done metrics for the plan yet is because we need to talk about the plan first, make sure that we've agreed on where we're going with the plan before we spend an enormous amount of time putting together metrics for things that will change. I want to talk very briefly about the pillars. The first pillar, of course, is education. And the goal for education is that we are going to offer a world-class, socially-conscious education to diverse students to prepare the next generation of citizens and leaders. And again, this is crafted on the basis of an enormous amount of feedback and changing the language around to reflect best what we're trying to accomplish on the educational pillar. There are several strategic objectives here. I'm not going to read you each one of those, but I am going to point you to strategic objective three, which is to create a signature core curriculum focused on modeling and developing socially-conscious global citizens and leaders. And so we have the ability here to enhance our core curriculum so that it is in fact signature. What I mean by that is that it's what we become known for in attracting students to the undergraduate education. That curriculum has not been revised for many years, and so it's a great opportunity as we roll out a strategic plan to think about ways in which we want that core curriculum to be formed. The next pillar is Research, Innovation, and Economic Development. And here, the goal is to empower innovative research, scholarship, and creative activities that drive knowledge creation focused on improving society. And again, reflecting the kind of research and scholarship across a wide variety of disciplines. And again, I won't read each of the strategic objectives, but I want you to look at strategic objective three as a focus. We want to implement a campus-wide effort to select and meet grand challenges. How can UAB help to address important social issues by taking on a grand challenge that will involve people from across multiple disciplines to address that kind of a challenge? The third pillar is the pillar of Community Engagement. And here, the strategic goal is to engage with the community in meaningful and mutually beneficial collaborations that contribute to the public good. And again, I think this begins to capture some of what we're already doing, but ways to elaborate on that and to make it even more fundamental to who we are. Next is Patient Care. And you'll see then a lot of other plans which we looked at, patient care would not be included. But because of the kind of institution we are, of course, patient care is also a fundamental mission pillar for us. And the goal is to lead in the delivery of the highest-quality, patient-centered integrative care that reflects our ability to translate discoveries into revolutionary therapies in one of the nation's premier academic healthcare centers. So those are the four mission pillars. But one of the things that we have to think about as we think about the plan is how do you resource the plan so that you can actually accomplish those objectives and then later the tactics? And Mr. Alan Bolton will talk a little bit about our ideas on resourcing.
Thank you, Pam. Good afternoon. Certainly no strategic plan would be complete without considering the resources needed to execute the ideas and recommendations presented in the plan. At the very foundation of this strategic plan, the shared values of stewardship and accountability indicate the importance of fiscal stability and creating the opportunity to invest in ways that will serve the best interest of the overall university. Investment strategies should be consistent with the guiding principles of continuous strategic thinking, data-driven decision-making, innovation, excellence, and stewardship of our resources. So in the next series of slides, I want to sort of lay out the concept or our thinking around how we want to consider investing in the plan over the next few years. So today, we're going to borrow the image of a Manhattan plot to illustrate how investments will be considered in the strategic plan. So instead of genetic coordinates, imagine each color along the x-axis is a different school, center, or program at UAB. Along the y-axis, imagine each colored dot is an activity or initiative within a school or a center or a program at UAB. For example, a dot may be a particular course in a school. It might be a research project. It might be a theater production. It might be a peer-reviewed publication. So you get the idea. It's the academic scholarship and initiatives that are going on across the institution. So if you begin to dissect this Manhattan plot, a vast majority of UAB activities will be fundamental to UAB's mission and importantly, performed at a very high level of competency across the institution. At the next level, there will be a set of activities or initiatives that go beyond that fundamental high level of competency and achieve a level of excellence that is a bit rarer than just the high level of competency. And rarer still, at a higher level, we have a handful of things, and probably at an institution our size only a handful of things, that help us achieve what we might consider distinctiveness. The grand challenge that Dr. Benoit talked about, or the grand challenge is, would be something that we would consider perhaps at this level of investment. And then, at the very bottom, there may be a handful of things, and again, only a handful, but things that we are currently doing that we might consider unaligned with one of the fundamental missions of the institution, or things that we're doing but we're not achieving that high level of competency in those things. And we'll talk about those again in a moment as well. So if you accept that premise, let's talk about how investment strategies might roll through the strategic planning process. So again, let's begin with the fundamental missions at high competency at that level with the majority of activities and initiatives that are being undertaken at the institution. Those are things that we would support primarily through our normal budget process. And I put over there "right size" and "maintain." There may be some of those things that we need to grow, for example, within that category. And there's some of those things that are just chugging along very well, but we've got to continually invest in those things to maintain that high level of competency. Moving on to the next level for excellence, this is what we are conceptualizing as requiring multi-year investment to achieve or maintain this higher level of performance across the institution. And then, at the level of distinctiveness or the grand challenge, that's where we would consider rare and extraordinary investments that would make these initiatives and would bring to UAB either US or world-renowned status in these areas. And then, for those things at the bottom of the scatter plot that are either unaligned or below the level of competency that we would agree doesn't live up to the UAB standard of performance, we'd either restructure and invest in those things to move them from here to at least here, or we may consider an option to divest ourselves of those things that we assume can't achieve a different status even with investment. Or things that we consider are unaligned with the mission or values of the institution. So there's a summary of these strategies now overlaid on the categories that I talked about. Let's move then quickly to talk about investment sources. So it's good to have strategies, but where's the money going to come from? So again, at that fundamental missions level, the money would come through our regular budget process, through debt that the institution might take on. We've got several buildings coming out of the ground that's funded through debt currently. Grant funding, of course, and philanthropy is always an important part of the funding model for initiatives at our institution. And we're fortunate, we live in a very generous community, particularly as it relates to many of the programs at UAB. When you move to the next level of excellence, this is where we consider the first investments perhaps from the Strategic Investment Fund that will be created through the Budget Model Process. You might tap into school or institutional reserve accounts there. At the School of Medicine, they have an academic enrichment fund that they use to fund things that are in this category. And our Athletics Department has an athletic foundation now, does the same sort of thing. There are other foundations at UAB as well, but I put those two up as examples. And again, these are all additive as you move from bottom to top. And then at the distinctiveness or grand challenge level, you might add on to that unique awards or corporate or government investments depending on what the grand challenge topic might become. And that'll be an exciting conversation that we are looking forward to the community at UAB engaging in over the next few months. And then, there are opportunities for reinvestment if there are any initiatives that are divested at the bottom. I mean, the reinvestment opportunity would probably move in this category here, if there are any such options discovered here. So again, that's how we're conceptualizing the resource flow through the strategic plan. We'll be attaching dollars to that in the next few weeks and months to sort of quantify what might be available in each category. But again, we think we'd be doing a disservice to the plan if we didn't contemplate the necessary investments on the front end. I'm going to turn the next series back over to Dr. Benoit.
So many strategic plans, once they're written, get placed onto a shelf and are dusted off when accreditation happens. And that's the last thing that we want to have happen. So we are thinking very consciously about how to move forward with the plan. And one of the things, of course, is this idea of a grand challenge. And as Mr. Bolton just said, in the next couple of months, there'll be opportunities for the UAB community to engage in a discussion of what constitutes a grand challenge and what would be the most appropriate grand challenge for UAB to take on initially. The second is the core curriculum that I mentioned earlier. And within this academic year, I plan to put together a task force to begin the discussion about what that core curriculum needs to look like. What are its competencies that we think are most important for students? And how do we accomplish the kind of goals that we want that will make us have a signature core curriculum? I mentioned earlier that we still need to determine metrics, and so that will be a task that we'll begin to take on very soon. In fact, we've asked the subcommittees on each of the mission pillars to help us again and to begin to think about what are the most appropriate kinds of metrics on each one of those pillars and those strategic objectives. And then last, I want to talk about aligning the schools and units to the university-wide plan. So many of them already have strategic plans, and I would say many of them have plans that are fairly consistent with this strategic plan because this plan, I think, does a pretty good job of representing what's most important to UAB. But there will be some attempts to go back and rethink those plans in relationship to this strategic plan to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction, that we all are accomplishing the same kinds of goals, that we are measuring them in ways that make sense. And so those are the kinds of tasks that we have left to do in order to think about the plan. The best kind of plans are living documents. They're changing. You're still continuing to get feedback and input into them so that you can constantly think about how you reflect best, how to move forward for your institution. I mentioned earlier that this is the Strategic Planning Council who spent enormous amounts of time talking about the issues I've just presented in a very short capsule. And I wanted to make sure that their names are up there. And then also, there are the mission pillar subgroups who worked on each of those areas and came up with strategic objectives and began to think, and now will think even more deeply about metrics on each one of those mission pillars. Those are the rest of those groups. If you're interested in reading the entire plan, if you're interested in going to the website and seeing again who's been participating, how the plan developed, this is the website address so that you can get more information about the plan in more detail. And that's it for the plan. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Bolton to talk a little bit about an RCM update.
So Anne or Josh, I'll ask you to remind me, did we last do this in late August? Is that correct, the last town hall? Or was it early September? August, okay. Had two different answers there, so well, okay. You're both right, okay. Fair enough. Well, since we last talked, I think at that time, I do remember that we announced the formation of some transitional committees for budget implementation. Those committees were formed. They were active at the time that we had our last meeting. They have continued to be active since mid, actually, early to mid-August. I'll remind you that the purpose of those three committees, and the committees are listed there. The membership of those committees is on our RCM website. I'll give you that link at the end of this series of slides, but would encourage you to go there and see the representation on those various committees. But they have been discussing the budget model specifics that were either not addressed during the original design phase or needed to be readdressed as better data has become available. And I'll talk about some of that actually right now. So we have begun the shadow year, and the first important work that this committee and actually the fiscal officers at the school level and across central administration have been engaged in for many of the past several weeks has been data verification. So since central costs will be allocated to the schools in the new model, the metrics that drive those costs, that cost allocation, it's important to get those right. What we don't want to do is push out a model and then begin arguing around, are the data any good? So we're having those arguments now. And actually, it's been very civil discourse, had great support and help from the chief business officers at the schools to participate in this. So the process about, this process of verification has been our point of emphasis over the last several weeks. And each fiscal officer has been provided with their school's or college data through, we pushed it out to box, and they've been asked to validate, review and validate that data. Let me talk about a couple of things that we've learned in this process just to give you an example of the work that's going on right now. When we look at space in the model and the allocation of the costs for space, the original budget model task force did not consider an issue that had been raised by one of the school fiscal officers, which was, what if we lease space externally? How is that counted in the model? So if I'm school X and I'm renting space from somebody in the community to house this or that program, am I then going to be charged twice in the model because of how the data for that square footage are captured in the model? If we hadn't gone through this process, the answer would have been, oops, yeah, you would have been charged twice. But we caught that as part of this data verification and validation process. And it's just not something that the higher-level task force even considered. And across the school, we're probably talking about less than 5% of the space overall. So order of magnitude overall, it's not very great. But if you're that school that is leasing that space, it's important to you. And we needed to get that right in the model. So that is being addressed and will be remedied when the model rolls. Another question that came up through this process, one school that was at the table said, hey, we had a PI that left our school and went to the school across the street. Actually, they're on the same side of the street. And that investigator, when he moved to the new school, took all his grants with him. So how do we count that? And how does that factor into the three-year rolling average for the grant base? So again, it's very good information, very good input that's coming forward that's helping us improve those issues that might arise in the model. The last example I'll mention is we need to provide a data dictionary when the model comes out that defines each category, each metric that's in there. So when we talk about faculty headcount, what are we counting in that? And are we sure that each school is being counted the same way? And do we, out of Central, agree, or do the schools agree with the data that Central's pushing out in that regard? So again, we're very pleased. That's exactly what the data validation process is supposed to be doing. So it's kind of nice when something works like it's supposed to. So we will continue down that path. And I, this might be a little bit hard to read, but again, this is the importance of getting this right. So on the left, the support centers, those are the costs that are going to be allocated out for support. And on the right, the allocation methodology, those are the metrics that are driving the cost that the schools will receive, or their share of the allocation. So we've got to agree with what's here, both the definitions and the data that underlie those definitions so that we have a fair distribution or allocation of those costs. So it really is important, and that's sort of the level of detail that the group is delving into at this point. The next piece of update I want to give you on the model is we've got to have, and we knew going into the budget modeling process, we really need better reporting mechanism across the institution that brings some consistency to the reporting that really populates data and pushes reports out that are very user-friendly, that are also able to be used and manipulated by the schools themselves to create helpful management-type reports. So we did acquire a new software package last summer. The fiscal officers have been engaged with a consultant that's come in several times now to do training on this. So the fiscal officers have been involved in conversations over the recent month or two on the metric module and the allocation module in the software package. And they are providing feedback currently on how to better optimize the views and make the data more user-friendly. So we intend to have the first month of shadow year data finalized this month and shared with the schools. We say in the coming days, I'm anticipating by the first week in December. So we're now a month and a half into the fiscal year. So we will have, and we just, in our current budget methodology, just reconciled the first month of October. We do that about, you know, 14, 15 days into the month. So in another couple of weeks, we'll have that reconciled and then the shadow data for that month. for that month. And then after the new calendar year starts, we'll be able to push that out on a monthly And then here is the website. We are doing a better job, I think, and hope you will agree with keeping the website current on the status of the RCM update. So you can learn more about where we are there if you want more detailed information. And I think our intent with these town hall meetings, while RCM might not be the primary topic in any of them, it will be a topic at every one of them. So you'll get some form of update from us in this forum at every meeting. The last major topic for today that I want to talk about, and hopefully you've seen some of the press around this over the last two weeks, for the first time in seven or eight years, we commissioned an economic impact study for the university. The last one we did used 2009 data and was published in 2010. We just completed a study that used 2016 data that was published day before yesterday, is that right, Melissa? So pretty hot off the press. Really great news for the institution, information that I think we should all be aware of, I think we should all be proud of, we all participate in this success. I can tell you, there's not another institution in the state that has this magnitude of impact in the region. So what we're showing is a $7.15 billion annual impact from UAB. I think the last study from 2010 was about $4.8 billion, so a substantial but explainable and logical increase over that period of time. You can see almost, well, a little over 64,000 jobs related to UAB and a governmental impact of almost $300 million. Here's a summary, some of the notable highlights. One in every 31 jobs within the state is related to UAB in one way or the other. For every $1 in state funding received by UAB, we generate $25 in economic impact. I think that was a 1 to 16 in our last economic impact study, if I'm remembering that correctly. Very proud of the fact that faculty, staff and students are very, very engaged in the community, and that was quantified as an $80 million community impact annually. And our health system, in addition to that impact, the health system provides more than $144 million a year in charity care to underserved populations in our state. So the full economic impact report can be found at this web address. And I'll say, Melissa Justice, in my office, has done a wonderful job of producing hardbound copies of this. If you're like me, I still like to have the book, smell the paper and hold it in my hands. Dr. Menter, you would appreciate that. So if you'd like a hard copy to fill it and smell it, Melissa can hook you up with a hard copy. So we're going to stop, well, we're not going to stop there. I'm going to say one more thing with our prepared remarks. Our next town hall is two months from this week, so look for the time and the places. We'll again do a two series. We'll repeat the same presentation on both ends of campus, just to make it more convenient for the various audiences on campus. Our main topics at the next meeting, we intend to be our process improvement committee, an update from that group, and an update on our parking and transportation study. So with that, we will end our prepared remarks and be glad to open it up for questions. Thank you. Great idea. So Melissa is going to pass out cards. Since we are live streaming today, if you have a question, we'll write it down, we'll read it from the podium so that everybody watching the live stream can hear it as well. So the question is, what criteria would we look at to divest of certain activities? First of all, I want to say, don't worry too much about that. We had to put it on the slide because it wouldn't be an efficient, effective strategic planning process if that consideration wasn't on the table. I would say at a high level, what we would need to consider is, first of all, does the activity align with the mission of the institution? So is, does it align with excellence in teaching, patient care, research, community service, economic impact? You know, most things, I think you could say, would make the case for that. And I would say, secondly, are we doing it, if it is aligned, are we doing it well, or at least at that standard of high competence that we can be proud of and that is emblematic of UAB? So Pam, anything further?
So one of the things I think to emphasize, if we go back to the values that we started with at the very beginning, one of them was accountability. So are the programs, are the kinds of things that we're investing in accountable? Are we measuring our success? Are we accomplishing our goals? And for some programs, that's a very easy yes, but for other programs, that's not the case. One of the things I'll remind you is that there are two choices when you have a program that falls into that kind of category. One is to invest in it enough in order to bring it to a level that is doing well, or the other is to make a decision that that program no longer needs to exist at the university. One of the things I think we often get criticized for is simply adding on, here's another thing, here's another thing, here's another thing, without looking carefully at whether or not we need to also be thinking about what are the best practices there and are there some things we should no longer be doing in order to invest in things that have been more successful? So I would just say that while you're thinking maybe of another question, I really encourage you to look at the plan. This is, I think, an incredibly exciting and very forward-thinking plan. And I know I'm incredibly excited about the ability to think about where this institution is going forward, and I think the plan does a really good job of capturing both the essence of UAB and also thinking about where we need to be at the next step. So please, if you have, even beyond today, if you have feedback, make sure you get on that website and provide it because we want to make this the best possible plan for UAB
Looks like one, another question? Great.
It is a question.
Great.
Do you have a timetable in mind for arriving at a signature core curriculum and more details about the process?
So I would like to get the task force up and started before the end of the academic year, but having worked on one of these before, I know that it does not happen overnight because a lot of the discussion has to do with who are we, what kind of competencies do we want to emphasize, before you get to any of the implementation about what courses fit or don't fit that kind of a model. So I actually anticipate that it will take us a bit of time to get that core curriculum in place and to think about it, but there are incredible models at other institutions that we can learn from, and we can start to think about whether or not they, how they might apply to our institution as well. We want something, again, that is unique. Right now, what we have is what I call, I think other people have also called it, a cafeteria-style approach to the gen ed curriculum. And many institutions have moved away from that, but UAB has not. So are there ways that we can better serve our students with different kinds of formats? And so we'll have to do a lot of, whoever's on that task force will do an incredible amount of work looking at other best practices on the time. But I don't have, I don't have a set timeframe. I just know that it will take us a while to get to there. But if we don't start, we don't, we don't get to that goal.
May I just say, go Blazers? We, hopefully, everybody has had an opportunity to experience one of our fantastic athletic teams here at UAB. We are very proud of our student athletes across the board. Our women's soccer program with a brand-new coach, I think, was second in Conference USA, if I'm not mistaken. They just finished a tremendous season. They were so much fun to watch. We've got last two regular season football games coming up, one Saturday out of town and somewhere south here, I think Gainesville, Florida. So that one's going to be on TV on Saturday afternoon. And then our last home game, a week from Saturday at noon at Legion Field. It's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so my guess is there'll be some tickets available, so please come out and support the Blazers at their last home football game. And the basketball season, men's and women's, has started. Both teams are so much fun to watch and just outstanding student athletes. So get out there and support the Blazers. Hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and thank you for coming.